Not that we had the same idea in mind, but our timing is perfect, or my timing.
Is this agenda? No. I'm going to grab the sheet.
I just wanted to grab.
But that's good.
We ask you to stand for the invocation and the pledge of the flag. Our special guest this evening will be the Reverend Matthew Baum as our guest clergy person.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, gracious God, giver of all good gifts, we ask you continue to watch over all of this council. We thank you for the good gifts you have given us for the history of this city. And we ask you to be watch over and bless each member of this council and the new mayor, that they make, make good decisions. They may listen to their constituents, and they may work together for the betterment of us all. We ask this in all things through Christ our Lord. Amen. Father, and the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Pledge to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll have roll call. Jen, please.
Clark.
Present.
Barber.
Present.
Arnone.
Present.
King.
Yes.
Brandon Taylor.
Present.
Spinelli.
Present.
Okay, I'm going to announce that council had executive sessions on January 8th, 2026, and this evening prior to opening of the session for personnel and litigation.
Thank you. At this time, we will have approval of our minutes, our regular minutes for December 10th, 2025, and special meeting minutes of December 21st, 2025, January 5th, 2025 reorganization meeting minutes. Jen, roll call.
Spinelli.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Brandon Taylor.
Yes.
Arnone.
Yes.
Barber.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
At this time, we do not have any proclamations, awards, honors, resolutions. We will take public comment from the audience on agenda items only, a list of five minutes. Do I have a? Okay, Mr. De Bartola, would you please come?
De Bartola, D-E-B-A-R-T-O-L-A, 1197 Bedford Street. You want to start the clock, I'll wait for you. The plumbing board, I've never heard of this, it's on your agenda. So is the Uniform Construction Code of Appeals Board. I actually called Charlene Stanton to ask her if her 10 years ago, if she heard of it. She actually called Jack Williams, who told her that this was an old board from he didn't even know how many years ago. So my question is, why are you resurrecting one or two boards from 10 years, 20 years, 30 years? How many years are we going back, and what are the purpose of these boards? My old friend Solicitor Bill Barbin would say, when you create a board, you create a monster. So I, I believe the plumbing has to be a master plumber. Are you doing this to charge fees? What, what are you doing with these boards? And why are you suddenly appointing them now? Is it a way to get money from a pre-existing board that you don't have to create a new tax? Please explain this. I filed a right to know request for the other applicants for the other boards, because you just have it on the agenda without saying who you're considering. And I'd like to remind this board that a year and a half ago, you almost appointed a convicted felon to the housing authority. Kwan Britt had three votes, convicted felon. The public deserves to know who you are appointing to these boards before you vote. If you're not going to tell us who you're appointing, I don't know if that's a sunshine violation, because the solicitor can answer that. You have to tell us who you're appointing. You have an item on the agenda for the Women's Help Center. Again, I could not get the resolution or any of the information. I write to know requested it yesterday. If we don't know what you're voting on, how do we talk about it? At one time, all the resolutions and all the paperwork was made publicly available. You don't do that anymore. So I really can't comment on what it is, because we don't know. You didn't tell us. You have two items on the agenda for settlement agreements with JPN Holdings, and one for Rashid Dev, tax appeals, tax assessments. I'd like to caution you on passing this. With Cambria County, those of you who are following our, our seven mil tax increase, you'll realize that every time you give a tax appeal, that's less money, that's a depreciation of property values in the city of Johnstown. Please be very aware that when you pass these, you're actually hurting the city, you're not helping us. You should really be scrutinizing these as we talk about property tax increases and reassessment. You have another wage and salary ordinance on the agenda. Is someone getting a raise? Again, this is like the third or fourth time in six months you've upped the salaries. Are you decreasing salaries? Are you creating new positions? Again, we don't have the resolutions, we don't know what you're doing. Now, I did get a copy of your reports listed on the agenda. You have department reports. I have the reports from last month. I received them this morning from your right to know officer. 917 property violation issues, 78 in the month of December. But when you read the neighborhoods, they all say zero. So how is it possible you have this many violations noted, and you have zero? You have 50 code violations listed on that report, only 50. I'm sure if people watching this video, and those of you up there listening to me, know there are so many code violations. Why are they not being reflected in your reports? Your police report, last month, 2,718 police dispatch calls for a city of 18,000 people from your report listed on your agenda. That is a very large number of calls. We need to start talking about your reports and your crime stats, and how we're going to curb these issues. Your solicitor's report, I write. I want to see how you're spending our money for the legal invoices. Because I'm curious how you're spending our money, because if you're spending too much money on legal fees, what are you spending it on? Lastly, my right to know department heads who confirmed that was true, and Lorraine Burrow basically told you no. My question is, why are you not telling the public that you're negotiating talks for consolidation? So if you're going to consolidate, which by the way, we may have to do that, that's not a bad idea. You should be forthcoming and honest about it, so we know you're trying to consolidate. So if other municipalities want to know what you're doing with our money, and if they're going to join the city of Johnstown, we have a better understanding of how these reports and this agenda are reflecting what we're doing. So I'd ask you to consider being more honest with us, more truthful with us, and to tell us what you're considering and doing. Don't just have a meeting, everything's great, and we don't have any information. Because I was surprised hearing from Lorraine Burrow officials that you approached them, and they told you no to consolidating with them. So if you're trying to merge with other areas to bring in more people, more revenues, and I see my time is almost up, please consider. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, if I'm reading this for Heidi, Heidi. Please come up, give us your name, your address, and is this an agenda item?
Yes, ma'am. So my name is Heidi Landendorfer. My address is 163 Benchoff Street, Johnstown, Pennsylvania. Good evening. My name is Heidi Landendorfer, founder of Cinnamon's Closet, and a member of Johnstown Animal Welfare Society. I am here again to show my support for the ordinance for animal breeding regulations and requirements in the city of Johnstown. I would like to thank the rescues, citizens, local, and state police for their roles in helping animals. Between Jaws, Seven Hearts Project, Project Meow, and Cola's Canine Rescue, just to name a few rescues, in the past year, we have spayed and neutered over approximately 600 animals. Rescues and citizens have been stepping up, rescuing, fostering, feeding, adopting, and providing medical to abandoned and abused animals. I would like to commend our local police for investigating and charging animal abusers and killers of animals. I'm here again to be a voice for animals who need one. I am requesting funding and cooperation on a government level to support and create solutions to overpopulation, abandonment, and abuse of animals. I appreciate you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Laura Uco.
First name, L.A.U.R.A., last name, H.U.C.H.E.L., 401 Park Avenue, City of Johnstown. Good evening from this side of the gate. Congratulations to all of you. So, so delighted to see everyone up there. I am also speaking about the animal breeding ordinance. I am the author of that ordinance. I was very delighted to pass it on the first read. I would very much appreciate if you would consider and pass it on the second read. There are, as Heidi mentioned, so, so many problems we have in the city with domesticated animals running. A lot of it is caused by breeding or negligence and allowing your animals to breed by negligence, not fixing your animals. And I know with ordinances, there's always a concern, who's going to enforce it? How are we going to enforce it? Like, like a lot of ordinances on the book, there, there aren't great answers. This one, at least if we can get it on there, if we can get our DCD department creating certifications for this, like we have with our foul permits and things like that, I think that's an adequate solution. I'd like us to throw as many things at the wall as we can, and see what sticks, see what we can get some revenue from. I know of at least six or seven breeders who are operating in the city, most of which don't have kennel license, which I've been talking to the dog warden about. And, you know, we just need to get a handle on that, and we need to get a handle on particularly our cat population as well. But I know this week alone, in the greater Johnstown area, you have five, five running dogs in 10 days. It's, it's going to get a whole lot worse, we're going to end up with packs of dogs. So I appreciate council's attention to all of this. I'm sure I started sounding like a broken record, but I'm delighted to be working with Art as well, and the rest of city management on establishing maybe some kind of municipal shelter. So I hope to continue those discussions. So Jaws is committed to working hard. I, I serve as the president of the Johnstown Animal Welfare Society currently, and, and we're committed to working with the city to keep moving on, on things like that. So we appreciate your attention to that. And I also wanted to take a moment and commend Chief Britton and the, the police force. I know in the past several weeks, I've seen four or five articles in the newspaper indicating that people have been charged for animal cruelty, or animal abandonment, or negligence. And that is also very much appreciated. An, an open relationship with the police department is vitally important if we're going to start holding people accountable for abuse. So thank you all very much for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Uco. Mr. Dustin Green. Your name, your address, please.
Thank you. Dustin Green, D.U.S.T.I.N.G.R.E.E.N.E., 312 Chestnut Street, City of Johnstown.
An agenda item.
Yes, ma'am. I'm here about the item on the back page of my copy here. Resolution of the City of Johnstown adopting a procurement policy involving transparency. I think that the rule has been broken right away, because all of you tonight have additional documents that you do not make available when we have these meetings. And I don't understand why the city keeps these documents at bay, when you have to make them available through right to know requests anyways. And then you complain when we, as the general public, make right to know requests, which in turn wastes time anyways. So if you want to make it simple, I don't know why you have to, why you can't just make the documents public anyways. I go back to Central Park. Everyone's mad about Central Park only for one reason, they don't know what's going on with Central Park. We had to write to know request to get the first round of budgetary items for Central Park. And lo and behold, they had to be released. And you can see on there, many line items, change orders, et cetera. All you have to do is just put it out there, and be transparent and cost effect, and, and transparent and cost effective for our city. It's right there. So this resolution that's on here is very simple for this new administration that's sitting here before us. I encourage you to make change, and make young business people like myself happy to be here, rather than upset and angry. I never used to stand up here. I owned a business for 11 years in the city of Johnstown, and 28 years in this community. Until the last two years, I never stood up here. And now I do, because I have it in my heart to stand up here and make this city accountable for what needs to happen. And I hope that you'll hear us. And it's very simple. If you just make this stuff available, so that it can be reviewed, and out to the public, and educate us, it might make things better. So I encourage you this year to make things more transparent, and do things in cost-effective manners, as what this resolution says. And in my time, I also want to advocate for what's on the front of my copy with the animal control ordinance that's being passed. In my neck of the woods, in Cambria City, we have an abundance of feral cats that are roaming the neighborhoods. And something has to be done, and something has to be added to the budgets for animal control in this community. In other neighborhoods, there are dogs running. And I do know of breeders in this community that are breeding without regulation. So I do agree that this ordinance is a good thing as well. So I'm hopeful that something can be done with animal control in our city. And I also noted in the budgets that were moved forward for 2026, there's not a lot of money for animal control in our community, and we probably should look into that for the future. So thank you very much for your time. 143, as always.
Thank you, Dustin. Dr. Chris. Name, address, please, and is it an agenda item?
Hi, I'm Dr. Christine Dahlin, C.H.R.I.S.D.A.H.L.I.N. 1118 Comfort Ave is my address. And also, congratulations, all of you guys, and thanks for representing the city. I'm here to speak about the animal breeding ordinance and advocate for that. So I'm a professor of wildlife management and biology at Pitt Johnstown. So my area of interest is animals and biology. And I'm also secretary of the Johnstown Animal Welfare Society, and I own a cat rescue in my house. So I can speak personally about the problem of animal overpopulation in the city of Johnstown. I've been running a rescue for about four years now, over four years. And just in the past year alone, Jaws has rescued over 250 animals. Every week, I receive more requests to help animals than I can take. And so I believe this ordinance is overdue and direly needed, and will really help the city. It will bring in revenue, and it will really help address the problem of the animal overpopulation crisis in the city. It will help deter breeders who are doing so without following regulations, without doing so properly. Let me look at my notes. So this ordinance will really help mitigate the problem of animal overpopulation. We need to address the problem of stray animals. So I want to speak on behalf of the ordinance, thank Laura for bringing this ordinance to the city, and say, not only do we need this, but we need a lot more from the city as well. We need more funding to address the problem. And so I hope this is really just a first step, that it gets approved, and that we see more, more fixes coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Ms. Dorothy Clark, if you want to come forward, she signed up to speak. Okay, well then, at the end of the meeting, okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we will call for reports in the absence of our city manager. We ask our assistant city manager, Mr. Capriotti.
So, so regrettably, Art was unable to be here tonight. He is going to provide an updated report to you all upon his return on Monday. We are continuing to meet with and go through the progress at Central Park. It remains ahead of schedule. They are working over there pretty much every day that the weather permits. They have continued to hold the same timeline that they gave us before, that they, they feel like as long as the weather continues to hold up, we should be in a timely fashion to be done by the beginning of July. We had a meeting today to start talking about wayfinding signage that's going to be needing to go in the park, and colors of concrete, and things of that nature, so. But he'll give you guys a, a much more detailed report on Monday upon his return.
Thank you. Thank you, city manager. Madam Solicitor?
Yes, there are a couple items on the agenda this evening. A couple items on the agenda this evening that I want to touch on. First of all, with regards to the wage and salary ordinance, it's my legal opinion that the council tabled that item for tonight. We found a few other errors in the salary, wage and salary ordinance that were found yesterday and need to be adjusted. And so we're not in a position for council to take action on that this evening. The other item I wanted to comment on is the procurement policy. That originated from an audit finding by Wessel over the summer with regards to the 2024 audit, and I believe it predated that as well in prior audits, a request for a more enhanced procurement policy. The city has had, in, in existence for quite some time, an ordinance addressing procurement issues. And the policy was to support that ordinance. However, my request of you tonight is to keep that tabled, with the understanding that the city administration and solicitor are to return with an amended ordinance addressing additional changes that have to happen in the existing procurement policy, and that will also embrace the, excuse me, existing procurement ordinance that will also embrace other terms that are set forth in the policy.
If you don't mind, maybe you could just get an answer to me. I do have, I wanted to address something that was brought up concerning the documentation that goes along with the resolution, that it wasn't posted to the website. I understand what they're saying, they're getting the agenda, and they have the resolution, but where's the, you know, the corresponding documentation as far as that being? It's.
So.
If it doesn't have to go out like right now, does it go after the meetings, or?
Okay, so there was, so first of all, the council packet by the city's charter has to go out to council Friday before, or three business days prior to the meeting. So the council packets are going out on time, and the agenda also has to be posted at that time. It's my understanding that there was a practice previously that the city would also, along with the agenda, would also have available the resolutions and ordinances that went along with that corresponding agenda, and that was available at City Hall. I'm not sure if it was on the website or not before the meeting. At some point in time, that process changed. I'm not sure why it changed. I did research the city charter a while ago to see if there was anything that required the city to continue to follow that process. And I didn't see anything in the, in the charter, or any of the codified ordinances that require that. It's up to the city and council as to whether or not you want to continue that, or reinstate it, I guess I should say. With regards to a question or concern, if this exists, about what is posted on the website after council meetings, it's also in the charter that any resolutions or ordinances that are passed must be posted on the city's website, and have attached to it the contracts associated with that. There apparently have been some resolutions in more recent years that the contracts have not been posted. Again, I don't know why that's the case, or if perhaps they were submitted for, for posting to the website and didn't make it up on there. It's my recommendation, moving forward, that those approved documents actually go on the website to support the resolution that's passed, or the ordinance that's passed by council. And that is what's required by the charter.
So then after it's passed, then the documentation?
Correct.
Will go on there?
Has to get posted. Yep.
Is there anything in our packets before the meeting that isn't available to the public? As if they couldn't have access to it? What's the harm in putting the whole council packet online when we post the agenda?
So. So the, the, I don't know that it's necessarily harm, but those record, those documents don't become official records of the city until after action is taken on them. And so that's why they're available by right to know after action is taken, but not beforehand. There, there could be personnel or confidential documentation in those council packets that would not, it would be not advisable to release that to the public. But the documents that I think that Mr. De Bartola and some other folks have referenced in terms of the resolutions and ordinances, from a legal perspective, I don't, I don't find, I'm not concerned that they would be made available to the public. Moreover, with regards to ordinances, they are advertised in the newspaper, and a copy of it has to be made available upon request by law. So it's, you know, there, that, that's the requirement.
So I would, I would think that, understanding that it's not an official record. So, I would, I would think that, understanding that it's not an official record, we should be putting at least all of the proposed ordinances and resolutions on the website before the meeting so that the public as well, you know, we get it, but the public can have an opportunity to review it, to come here for public comment on the night whenever we address it, not just after the fact. So, I don't know, you know, I would like to see that happen, at least, and I understand maybe with some sensitive material, but at least all the ordinances and resolutions, we can put on the website before the meeting. Is that just a directive we have to give to the city administration?
But I also agree with Dustin, exactly what he said, it will cut down on the write to notes because then the information would be there.
Yeah, I mean, I think to be, even, you know, remembering whenever I was on that other side of the gate. You come to the meeting, you see, you know, a title for an ordinance. You have no idea what's in the ordinance. So, it's even tough to have an opinion of, you know, should, because the devil's in the details. You know, should council support it or not? How do you know based on just the title of it?
So, at least the full ordinance should be out there?
I would say. Whatever we're voting on at the next meeting.
So, does that, is that something that we have to put forward as a resolution? Or is that just a directive now that we give to the city manager?
I mean, I think, so, I think you can...
Is the full ordinance, in other words, not just like you said, the title, the actual ordinance?
Right, and again, you know, the ordinances are to be made available because they're advertised in the newspaper.
I guess I'm talking specifically about the website, you know, we, you know, it's 2026. Let's put it on the website so we can not just have to show up to City Hall.
Okay, yeah, so at this point, my recommendation would be based on the discussion. If the remaining, if a majority of council wished for that to occur, we will internally at City Hall make sure that happens with the one caveat that it's my understanding that the city is creating a new website and that there are perhaps delays in getting information up on that website because it's not posted internally by employees of the city, it's posted by a third party. And Mr. Capriotti, if you could correct me if I'm wrong. So, because the, the agenda goes out to council Friday, you know, we would have to work to make sure that the rest of, that the resolutions and ordinances or just ordinances, I don't, you know, I don't want to put words in your mouth, you had mentioned ordinances, get up on the website. The, you know, sometime, 24 hours at least before the voting meeting on the following Wednesday.
And I think if it goes out there, though, there has to be some type of heading that says tentative because it has not...
You could, you could put a watermark across the whole thing, it says draft.
There you go, there you go, there you go. I don't know if that's something that we need to...
We have to get to a point in the meeting where you, if that's an action you want to take in our new business, just...
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's not on the agenda, but I think the message, you know, if that's, if that's what council want, you know, we'll make sure that happens and then moving forward, you know, we could have...
Can it just be a directive?
For now, yeah.
And we can formalize it for the next meeting, we can...
Okay, okay. At this time, we will take, normally, we have council reports and a mayor's report. But I know that since most of us are new, how about if we do it this way? I really am just going to forego any type of report and just say, welcome to each and every last one of you. And I'll start with Councilman Clark and just come down the line. And for the new people, if there's just something that you want to address to the audience, and I know Mr. Arnone has the report, please, Mr. Clark.
First of all, it's nice to say this for the very first time, thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate it. I don't have too much to say, but I just want to inform everybody here that starting January 20th, at Jimmy T's in the back room is the next downtown business owners' meeting and a restart of that every month. We did not have it in December. So, it'll restart for the new year that day. And all business owners within downtown, or it doesn't even have to be within downtown. If you're a business owner and/or anybody in the public, you're welcome. And basically, this, this meeting is going to be about me just getting up and saying, what do you guys want to see in 2026? And go through, and go through that tentatively. So, that's really all I have. So, thank you very much and congratulations to all the new members.
Mr. Barber, please.
A follow-up on Mr. Clark, congratulations, Madam Mayor and to the rest of council. But at this time, I'll pass to Mr. Arnone because I know he has a lot to say.
Thank you and congratulations to all. As your representative on the Housing Authority, as in the past few months, I've provided an update as to statistical information related to the population of the public housing communities located in the city of Johnstown. Can you hear me, John? As of December 31st, 2025, our population statistics are as followed. In public housing within the city of Johnstown, our units were 96% occupied with 257 people across 1,339 apartments. Our Section 8 utilization is, was at 77% with a population of 952 individuals and 429 units within the city boundaries. Current funding for HUD is not sufficient to add additional families to be brought into the Section 8 program. During the holiday season, the additional participation in the Christmas villages downtown with a structure that was on display with, at People's National Cast by the Housing Authority, we also installed LED trees for residents to enjoy throughout the family communities. Numerous capital fund projects are currently out for bids, which is including parking lot improvements at Oakhurst and Cooper's Dale, as well as activities in northern sites in Antiguo and Portage, which will see window replacements and walk improvements. JRA is continuing to monitor the status of federal budget as another shutdown could affect program operation. The Housing Authority traditionally receives funding for its programs on a monthly basis and retains limited financial reserves for basic operations. As of right now, we're operating on a month-to-month basis based on the federal government's situation. Is there any questions about the Housing Authority? Okay. As your representative on the Water Authority, the customer service department received 95 new service applications, property transfers, 36 inactive accounts were reactivated during the month. During the month of November, two new services were installed, eight service renewals were completed, three mainline breaks were repaired and 22 hydrants were winterized. The mainline installation of LED LED replacement program in the old Cornwall Borough area, Hudson Street, is 100% complete. There was a big break there on Hudson Street. And rather than wait, we just replaced the main line and did the lines to those houses on that street. The crew have also worked on mainline installation in Brownstown, which is approximately 30% complete. In November, all, all the 1,500 letters of to customers were self-reported QR code were sent out. In November, 3,275 feet of mainline was jetted, 11,662 feet of mainline was inspected. The continuous operation is to, we're staying ahead of the LED enforcement program. I want to reply to everybody that it's not going to cost you anything. If you got that letter, please call the Water Authority and inform them, make an appointment to have them come out and inspect it, they'll take a picture. If your LED line going into your house is copper, it won't, nothing will be happened. If the line coming into your house is lead, it won't cost you anything. They will put you on a program that they know where it is, isolate the situation. And when you do, when they go to your neighborhood, they'll replace the main line and the whole way up to your meter in your house at no cost to you. Is there any questions for the Water Authority? That's all I have.
On Thursday, January 22nd at 6 o'clock, there will be a West End Business Association meeting at Favor on Fairfield Avenue. Councilwoman Taylor?
Hello, guys, congratulations to everyone, congratulations to Madam Mayor. Can you hear me, John? Okay, so, I did have the opportunity to get to go to a ribbon cutting for a young lady who opened up a clothing store right here in the downtown area. It was refreshing to see that there was a business that came in the downtown area. I met her at a Juneteenth vending event. To see her from vending from June to now having a store location was really refreshing. So, that was a plus, but that's all I have, that.
My comments would be, congratulations to everybody, looking forward to working with you. Let's get to work.
Good, so next month, everybody will have a community report. Our ordinances for second read are as follow. Ordinance numbers, ordinance number 5376, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Johnstown, Pennsylvania, amending the City of Johnstown Code of Ordinances, Part 10 Streets, Utilities and Public Services Code. Title 6 Other Public Services, Chapter 1060 Garbage and Rubbish Collection and Disposal. And ordinances 4275, passed March 6, 1982, 5015, passed December 19, 2004, and 5274, passed 4/17/2019. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second it. Ready? Questions, any questions? Jen?
Clark?
Yes.
Spinelli?
Yes.
Brandon Taylor?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Arnone?
Yes.
Barber?
Ordinance 5377, an ordinance establishing licensing and permitting requirement, and permitting requirement fees and penalties for animal breeding within the city of Johnstown to support animal welfare initiatives.
Motion.
Second. I just have one comment on that, real quick. I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Ukel for authoring this and bringing it to our attention. And I think it's quite important and I would agree with most of the comments that were made earlier that there's much more work to be done, but this is a good start. So, thank you very much.
No other questions?
King?
Yes.
Brandon Taylor?
Yes.
Spinelli?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Barber?
Yes.
Arnone?
Yes.
Ordinances for first read. Ordinance number 5378, an ordinance amending ordinance number 5375, adopted December 10th, 2025, establishing the salary and wages to be paid all elected officials, all elected officials and employees of the various departments and bureaus of the city of Johnstown for the calendar year beginning January 1st, 2026.
Motion to table?
Second.
Roll call?
Spinelli?
Yes.
Brandon Taylor?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Arnone?
Yes.
Barber?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Onto our resolutions. Resolution number 10746 was tabled on December 10th, 2025.
Motion to remain on table.
Second.
What was your motion?
Motion to remain on table by council's advice.
I don't think you really need one, do you?
No, you don't need one, we're just going to leave it on the table for now.
Very good.
Resolution number 10747, a resolution of City Council of the City of Johnstown, Pennsylvania, authorizing the city manager and city solicitor to execute the attached settlement agreement with JPN Holdings LLC to resolve a tax assessment appeal regarding the property at 216 Main and 217, 219 Union Street in Johnstown, PA 15901, and to take any and all necessary actions to effectuate the same. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion, but after the second, I'd like to address some information.
I'll second it. Now, question?
Under the question, we do take regard to tax resolutions. For the public's knowledge, when this is done and when it gets to this point, the county and the school district have already associated, assessed that this is the proper thing to do because all three of us tied together with the same tax agreement. So, when, they've already went through the legal ramifications for all this. It's unfortunate, but when this happens, it's the position that we go along with it because there's no further, we're not going to beat this thing to death. They've already won it, won it with those two negotiations. So, that's why, to answer your question earlier, that's why that happens this way.
What, just as a question, what would happen if we said no?
They could take it to court again.
Yeah, then, then you would continue to litigate it. And I could give council an additional update on the status of the litigation in executive session. My recommendation is to move forward with the stipulation. Attorney Andrews, who was the interim solicitor at the time this was originally presented to council, but was not on the agenda, also is in support of it, of the stipulation. And he's the one that participated with other council in negotiating it. It's my understanding that the district, school district previously approved it and I believe the county has as well, but...
Any other questions? Comments? Roll call, please.
Arnone?
Yes.
Barber? Clark?
No.
Spinelli?
Yes.
Brandon Taylor?
Yes.
King?
Yes. Resolution 10748, a resolution of City Council of the City of Johnstown, Pennsylvania, authorizing the city manager and city solicitor to execute the attached settlement agreement with Rashid Deeb to resolve a tax assessment appeal regarding property located at 142 Walnut Street, Johnstown, PA 15901, and to take any and all necessary to effectuate the same. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second it. Any questions or comments?
In terms of this one, this also was negotiated with Attorney Andrews and the other attorneys associated with this tax assessment appeal prior to me assuming duties as solicitor. It was never approved by council for execution. And it also is my understanding that this one was previously approved by the school district quite a while ago, along with the county.
Any other? Ready for the roll?
Barber? Clark?
Yes.
Spinelli?
Yes.
Brandon Taylor?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Arnone?
Yes.
Resolution 10749, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Johnstown, PA, approving the award of home art funds in the amount of $375,843.50 to the Women's Help Center Incorporated, Dorm Business as the Community Help Center, and authorizing the proper city officials to execute all documents necessary to enter into an agreement with the home art funds. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
If I can, Mayor, this subject came up over a year and a half ago, if you recall. John, you might remember in particular, there was quite a negotiation about them getting the building and them, and the...
Victim Services.
Victim Services were working towards getting this contract. They have since bought the project, bought the building with their help of their own funding and public interest. And this is to help them further renovate part of that building, that's what this is about. No, no, it's, it's just this, what, the building that they have getting renovated. It happened, over a year and a half ago, if you remember.
Any other questions, comments? If not, let's call for roll.
Arnone?
Yes.
Barber?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Spinelli?
Yes.
Brandon Taylor?
Yes.
King?
Yes. Resolution 10750, a resolution of the city, of City Council of the City of Johnstown, Cambor County, Pennsylvania, authorizing and directing the city manager to sign all documents necessary to execute an agreement with the city engineer, the Eads Group Incorporated, and Eads Architects Incorporated for complete preliminary design, final design, and preparation of bid documents consisting of drawings and project manual with technical specifications, bidding and award phase services, construction administration, and grant administration. construction administration, and grant administration services for renovation to the Public Safety Building. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
No second? Motion fails.
Can you repeat what we just heard, if this motion failed?
The motion failed. Let's move on to new business. At this time, are we okay, we're going forward with this?
You want a motion to do that?
Motion to do what?
To withhold this, till we place the seventh counsel.
I'm sorry, Mr. Arnone?
I, I'd like to make a motion that we withhold these appointments till after the seventh person is appointed to council.
You're referring to the, the items under new business, one through?
The appointment's under new business.
Okay, so there's a motion to table?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Properly moving second. That the appointments to the boards be held until such time council is a full body, that would make sense, because then if there's a tie, we would need for it to be broken. Okay, I need a roll call.
Brandon Taylor?
Yes.
Arnone?
Yes.
Barber? Clark?
Yes.
Spinelli?
Yes.
King?
Yes. Do we have any old business? Any old business? At this time, I'm gonna ask for. Are the department reports on the website? So that the public does not have them?
Madam Mayor?
Okay, well, then I'm going to ask if the directors at this. Do you have your reports, directors? Okay, well, then I'm going to ask at this time if it would be okay?
Yes.
Are you okay?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then at this time, I'm gonna ask that each director's, beginning with Chief Britton, if you would come forward, please, and give a report to the public.
Good evening, everybody, and congratulations to Madam Mayor and all members of council. Report for December of twenty twenty-five. Officers handled over twenty-five, two thousand five hundred and eighty-five total dispatches for the service from the month, including all calls contracted to the area of Daleboro, West Taylor Township, Middle Taylor Township, Lorraineboro, and the Johnstown Housing Authority. Sixteen people were taken into custody on outstanding warrants with the assistance of the Pennsylvania Office of Attorney General, Pennsylvania State Police, Cambria County Cert. Numerous were made along with the seizure of a large quantity of illegal narcotics and firearms. The Johnstown Police Department has recently unveiled our Crime Watch application, replacing tip four-one-one. This system will allow us to effectively connect with the public, giving them information and resources right at their fingertips. Some of the major resources it provides includes up-to-date case information and recent, and security alerts, access to report requests, and our submitted tip line, warrant listings, camera, pet alarm, handle with care, and bicycle registration, and a large resource and frequently asked question database. All submitted information is visible only to the Johnstown Police Department for the express purpose of making our community a safer place with a streamlined police interaction. We have a QR code, which you can get if you go down, when you leave the Public Safety Building, if you don't have it, on the one window, well, it's actually on the door downstairs in the lobby. And there's also one on the fire department's window that you can scan, and I believe we put a, a sign up right outside the, like a street sign right outside the city hall. We have three newly sworn-in Johnstown Police Officers that started in December. They are currently starting their fifteen-week-of-fill training program where they will gain the practical knowledge of police work. Upon successful completion, they will progress to solo patrol. We participate in multi-community events during the month to include the Christmas market, and the first responders at Christmas event will be raised over thirty thousand dollars, and we're able to take two hundred and fifty children shopping at Walmart. Due to tremendous support from the community, we're able to far exceed that benchmark of last year where we helped one hundred and twenty-five children. This would not have been possible without the community, responders, and helpers who donate their time and energy. So, I want to thank them very much for that. And Madam Mayor, that's all I have.
Excuse me, Chief. You created, you told us of this phenomenal amount of numbers that you, your police officers addressed over the past month. Of them, how many of them were really critical situations? Because that's a large number, but I understand both sides, but for the public's knowledge, could you relate that a little bit?
Anything that we do, whether it's responding to anything from a, a, a part-one offense within the UCR codes, which would be, the worst is a homicide. And that goes anywhere down to a part-two offense would be a theft, a terroristic threat. And it also includes foot patrols. Anytime that our officers do anything out in the public that, foot patrols in the housing authority, foot patrols in the neighborhood, barking dog, nine-one-one hangup, any of that, our office, my officers create a report. These numbers that are seeing our report, are numbers that are, we are dispatched, numbers that we get from the Cambria County nine-one-one center. Those are those numbers. And again, those numbers include barking dog, loud noise, suspicious person. They can be anything from, again, shootings, a stabbing, a domestic violence. All those numbers are incorporated in that. They're not necessarily aggravated assaults, you know, heinous crimes that, that we deal with sometimes. So, those are calls that's just for somebody in a motor vehicle accident. Needs, needs insurance information. They're, they call into the nine-one-one center, the nine-one-one center generates a number. That number's then, that call is then given to that officer. That officer then returns that phone call. When that officer's done, goes in there. Goes into our reporting system.
Thank you very much.
Those are the numbers that we do.
Thank you very much.
If I can, may I also say that we have started a program with Victim Services, and you had brought up about the Women's Help Center. Victim Services now works alongside of us. It's a program that myself, Captain Dan Price, and Detective Sergeant Corey Adams started around October of last year. And they're working very closely with us on cases, on situations of domestic violence. And they're also very essential to our officers that are out in the field and may deal with something that, you know, maybe, especially our new guys, that they're not used to see. So, our relationship that we have with Victim Services right now is incredible. And I'm gonna be having a talk with Assistant City Manager, Mr. Capriotti, and Art Martinosco on the relationship that we want to build further with them. But I, I want to give a thanks out to Victim Services of Johnstown for the things that they're doing for the community and for our department. Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And who do we have speaking for codes? Okay, Mr. Capriotti for codes.
Thanks, Mayor. So, for the codes department, in the month of December, they wrote one hundred and twenty-four violations at forty-five properties. Laurel Municipal, for the month of December, had fourteen properties and seventy-four violations. Laurel Municipal had nine hundred and ninety-one year-to-date, and they have nine trials currently pending on violations that, that are waiting to go before the magistrate's office. Rental inspections that were completed with the City Fire Department, codes department, a total of thirty-one in the month of November and December. And that process continues weekly. They, they are going out and continuing rental inspections as well. That's all.
Any questions for Mr. Capriotti?
Question. You said forty-five properties, so you're just doubling, I mean, not doubling, but you're counting violations per property and then putting that into the, the report, right?
That's the number of violations, the number of properties that were done. One hundred and twenty-four violations were written on forty-five properties. So, there were some properties that had.
Multiple.
Multiple. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Public Works?
Good evening, congratulations to everybody and Madam Mayor. Report for basically December. We started off with, we have a lot of snow. We've been doing a lot of plowing. We have eighty-eight miles of roads that we plow. We have nine vehicles that we do that with. So, most of our time is taken up with plowing the streets and primaries, secondaries, and then hitting the alleys. We do the top of the parking garages for plowing. There's only one vehicle that will fit up in there to do that. Also in the parking garages, we have the ITC Building and Lincoln Street Garage. We've cleaned every floor, all the steps, stairwells. We've been having some issues with elevators not working. Talking with the contractor right now and trying to set up a schedule for them, so I know what they are doing and when they are doing the repairs and the maintenance on that, on that part of it. Conference Center, the roof is completed on the Conference Center. The chillers for the Conference Center should be coming online here on the twentieth next week. They're gonna do the startup on those, and that project should be completed. Though we'll have to come back in the summertime and really put it underneath a load for, in the, in the summer when the heat is extremely hot, and recalibrate those chillers up there to make them work pretty good. Repair shop, there's one mechanic there now. We're working on hiring a new one, another mechanic, and, and trying to hire four labors for over the Highway Department to get us some more people to actually do a little bit more work and get other streets plowed and sidewalks and bridges and that, all cleaned up in the wintertime. We're gonna start doing shifts starting next week, so we'll have people twenty-four-seven, twenty-four-six early. They won't be working on a Sunday, unless there's a snowstorm, we'll have to call somebody out. Repair shop is basically starting up in the rotation for state inspection for all the vehicles. We've been picking up garbage every day at all the sites, the garbage cans downtown, and picking up snow in front of city hall and all the corners that are plowed up during the course of the winter, sending them out, so people do not have to tramp over large piles of snow in the wintertime.
Just my point of comment, those chillers that were done at the convention center was done through a grant. It wasn't city money that was used to that.
Yes, grant money, yes.
Thank you.
On, they were supposed to start today at the ITC Bill, not, at the Conference Center, to put all new LED lighting in, but there is, the company didn't come in. They should be here at the beginning of next week to put all new LED lighting in the Conference Center then.
Carm, not to throw you under the bus, but did get a lot of complaints concerning snow removal.
Yes.
Just didn't really seem that the roads were. I don't know.
Loud. Loud or salty?
I gotta, I gotta come in. Over the New Years, we had, we had the snow. I gotta come in by guys. I came in, I had people out, and they were plowing, and the streets were absolutely, they were still snow-covered, but they were plowed back curb to curb all through downtown and a lot of the neighborhoods. I know we get calls that everybody wants to be first. We cannot be first every place. We have nine vehicles, eighty-eight miles of roads. We cannot be every place. We have a big truck and a small truck in every neighborhood. They get all the primaries, the secondaries, and then if there is people that are calling, they have to go to a hospital, and ambulants have to get there. If we have to follow a fire truck, whatever, we get there, we do all the bus runs, and all the school bus runs. So, we cannot be every place, but we are in every neighborhood with a big truck and a small truck. The people just have to wait until we get to them.
I do understand. And I, I know that you guys are probably doing the best you can, but it wasn't just the side streets. It truly was the main streets as well. And I don't know whether it was because the way it snowed or whatever, so I'm just putting it out there so that you can just be aware that as council, we get a lot of the complaints. And like I said, it's not just the person who lives in the alley or the person that lives on the side streets. I'm talking Franklin, Napoleon. Those streets were not in the best shape either.
Cambria City.
With, with cold weather, salt only works up to a certain temperature. Okay, so you get down below into fifteen, fifteen degrees, thirteen, twelve, ten degrees. The salt does not work really great either. You know, it goes down through, it gives you a little slush on the bottom and then refreezes. So, and it all depends what, it might sound funny, but it depends what kind of snow. We had one snowfall that, when you plowed it up, you plowed down to the pavement. Then we had the other snows that were more sticky that actually stuck to the pavement. So, you did plow it off. It may not have looked like it was plowed, but it, it was. Yes, sir.
On the, you said we're having coverage twenty-four-six.
Yeah.
Is that for a certain time of the year?
That's, we're starting that next week, it'll be January, February, and March.
And does that cost us extra to have?
No.
People, okay. So, could that window of twenty-four-six coverage, you know, become? I guess, what would it take for the plowing to get better?
To get better?
Yeah.
More vehicles, more people?
You said we have nine?
Nine.
Were those nine all out at the same time?
There was eight out.
Okay.
One was broke down.
Okay.
And then in between that, they do break down.
Sure.
The plows break, the trucks, the four-wheel drives don't work, whatever. We got mechanic side, like I said, we have one mechanic right now. We have to go down there and do the repairs on it. And if we don't have the part, four-wheel drive went out on it, on one of them, on the one hub. Had to order that in. They were using it on two-wheel drive, which was fine. They could do, do that on the level. And we still had that one out, but there is one that's broke down right now.
But bottom line, if we wanted to see improvement, we ought to.
Improvement is more people, more trucks.
Got it.
Carm, you want to speak on concerning the city garage?
About the city garage?
It's separate reports, Carm, so.
I don't know, they should have, yeah.
Oh, just the city garage, well, there is, like I said, there's just one mechanic there and myself. We have a loner from the highway that helps us, Will Miller. He's not a mechanic, but he is definitely helping us out, working on some minor stuff in a, in a repair shop. So, but besides that, that's, that's basically about it for the shop there.
Anybody have anything else for Carm? Thank you so much.
Yep.
All right. We did skip over one thing. I'm going to ask the city Assistant City Manager, Mr. Capriotti, if you would talk about the.
Yeah, I apologize, everybody. I did, I did forget to mention, we did apply for and get approved for the Great American Cleanup that we do every April, for the month of April. That will happen again this year. We're gonna start working out the logistics of that. And it'll be hopefully as successful, if not more successful than last year. I think it was extremely, you know, it was extremely effective last year. I think we saw more than fifty dumpster loads come out of the city through the month of April for people being able to clean up properties or get rid of old junk and things like that. So, that is going to take effect. And there'll be more information with the specifics, with locations of dumpsters, and times that the dumping areas will be open as we, you know, get closer to the springtime.
And if I can just piggyback on that and say that, I know that there were a lot of questions concerning where the dumpsters were. And they were moved, and they were moved on purpose because we did have people from. and they were moved, um, and they were moved on purpose because we did have people from other municipalities coming down to the city dumping their trash down here. And so that's why, uh, they, someone was standing there, uh, taking identification to make sure that you actually lived in the city if you were going to use that dumpster. Now, um, I did notice one thing, and maybe I'm overlooking it, but on Pro Disposal site, and I don't think on, and we have anything on our website, and maybe, maybe I just didn't see it, what day, if whatever neighborhood you live in, what day your garbage is to go out? Is that some, where is that at? Because I look for it on Pro Disposal site, and then I also look for, and I, I don't, I don't see where it says, like, if you live in Hornestown, your garbage day is this day, if you live in, your garbage day is this day. And, and I'm not seeing that, and I think that would be helpful.
Sure, so, uh, Pro Disposal sends out every year towards the, uh, end of the year where, what their schedule is. It has the calendar on days that they're not picking up because of a holiday or if it gets moved.
Yeah, but they don't have the neigh- if you live in the neighborhood, they have that out there, but they don't have per neighborhood what your actual day of garbage is. And sometimes I think when people move here, they have no idea what day their garbage goes out, so there's, garbage might be out there all week. And, yeah, so maybe that's-
Yeah, we'll look at that, we'll, I'll talk to the folks at Pro and see if we can't get them to put something out, uh, that explains what-
What day.
What day they're out and, and what area, we can do that.
Mayor, we should find out how many dumpsters we dumped last year and have some type of campaign to beat that number.
Absolutely, I know, we have that number at City Hall.
I like it.
Yeah, we're taking out the garbage.
Okay, take out the trash, okay, okay, all right, Spinelli, all right, just picnic, okay. At this time, we're gonna ask our Fire Chief to please call.
Well, Madam Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to, to address council and, uh, welcome all you and congratulations for, um, serving our community in your capacity. So I'll, I'll break this down, um, Chief Britton talked about things, but I'll go over our call volume, um, as well as our training and some of our community events and things of that nature. So in the month of December, uh, we responded to two-hundred-and-fifty-four calls for service. So alarms that vary across the genre of, of, uh, from fire to EMS. Uh, and just allow me to touch on that real quick, 'cause I, I don't think a lot of people understand that. Uh, I know there was an opportunity before you came into, to office to, to get briefed on the, the Fire Department, the services we provide, and I do just want you to know that that's an open invitation at any time. My office is always open, my phone always rings, so if you have questions or would just like to come and spend some time, uh, looking over the services we provide, 'cause they're very vast. Not only do we provide, uh, you know, fire and EMS protection for the city on the QRS side on EMS, but what our capabilities are as a department, not only, uh, citywide, countywide, regional-wise, state ri- uh, wide, as well as, uh, some of our members being on federal urban rescu- rescue teams, um, that can provide that service anywhere in the United States. Some notable calls we had in the month of December, uh, we had, um, five, uh, fairly large structure fires we dealt with, three of those being in the city, and when I refer to structure fires, um, I'm gonna give you the, 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 the worst. Naturally, we grade them down according to, to what they are, but when we refer to structure fire, uh, that is when hoses put on the street and, uh, entries made to do suppression efforts. Uh, we do also respond on a mutual aid assignments outside of the city, uh, and we had two large fires over the city as well. Uh, in the city, uh, one-eighty-five Wilson Street, nine-ten Bedford Street, and, uh, two-nineteenth Strayer Street, uh, were some notables. Uh, of our alarms of our two-hundred-and-fifty-four, seventy-two percent of those were fire-related incidents with twenty-eight percent of those being EMS. Now, what I mean by EMS is the city fire department, all members are required to be a minimum of EMT. Uh, we do have seven paramedics on staff as well. Uh, we do what's provided, we provide a QRS service where we go to assist, uh, the ambulance, uh, and provide basic life support a lot of times prior to the ambulance getting there. That program has started in the, in the twenty-one-plus years I've been here, we've been doing that for that. Uh, and that does make you, uh, a huge difference in survivability rates, uh, within the city. Just to recap for last year, uh, last year was one of our busiest years, we ran three-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-nine calls for service, seventy-six percent of those calls being fire-related and twenty-four percent being the QRS or EMS-related. Uh, and that seems to be a, you know, pretty close to a monthly trend for us, uh, throughout the year, and we break it down by the month. We analyze the calls, um, in our reporting software, which we're looking at changing because that's a, the, the state is going with a different system, will allow us to actually track those numbers deeper, uh, into what actually those, those calls and, and break them down even more. A couple, uh, notable things also with our, with the, the Fire Department or services, and things that happened in the month of December, ladder inspections, we're required every year to have every ground ladder and aerial ladder tested to the national standard. Uh, all of those have passed, um, which is great with the amount of use they get, uh, so we're happy to see that. And a lot of that goes into, uh, back to our city garage and, uh, the support we get from them with taking care of our equipment. Training-wise, uh, a big training, and we're, we're very big on certifications, not only at the state level, but on the, on the national level. Uh, we actually brought in a fire inspector certification. As you know, city fire is getting more involved in, in the codes aspect with out there. Uh, with that being said, I wanted our people to have that certification, um, just for, so they're trained and better prepared to go in and provide that service and assist with codes. We were actually the first department to pilot the new program, uh, in the Commonwealth, so, uh, Bucks County Community College, when I brought this up, they had a new program coming out and they were thrilled. And the City of Johnstown Fire Department tends to do that a lot for, for training programs and it's in certifications, uh, through different ETAs. Uh, they like to come here and use us to, to pilot a lot of their certifications, and that's a real feather in our cap that they, they hold us to, to that standard. Police Chief Britton brought up about the, uh, the Christmas shopping with first responders, what do you use success? Fire Department participates in that as well, um, uh, it's very humbling to do that and to spend that time. Another big service, and, and part of our job also is not only the response, but we do a lot of public service and public education. We've completed a lot of that in the month of December as well. Um, one of those big ones is working with the Red Cross to provide free smoke detectors to our residents. Unfortunately, with some of our fires, uh, and smoke detectors not being present, we do a big push on that, and we continue that throughout the year. It's not a monthly thing, we don't go by the October fire prevention, we push this, uh, all year long. And, and in the month of December, uh, working with our partners at Red Cross, we were able to put in well over a hundred smoke detectors, uh, in different residents throughout the, uh, the city. They also come to us and we work with our neighboring, uh, departments, uh, if there's requests, we will provide smoke detectors to them to let them install them as well. We have been working with codes, we continue to work with codes. Uh, not only with the rental inspections, uh, we'll be getting back into the property maintenance. We're actually, we learn things as we go, so we're, you know, re, uh, enhancing that program as well, uh, so that we can provide that more efficiently throughout the, throughout the city. The police chief, uh, brought up about victim services and vic- and, and related to, uh, incidents within the police department. Uh, we have just recently teamed up with victim services as well. Uh, is, as you know, throughout the year, we've, we, i- in the, the individuals, uh, that make up the, the city fire, handle a lot of traumatic events, uh, not only on the fire side, it's, which you know with the fatal fires that we've had, uh, but also in the EMS side as well. It's important we train well, but our mental health, um, needs to be, be looked after as well. So over the past several months, I've met with victim services, uh, we're finally able to, to get a mon- money, actually through them appropriated and moved to the fire side, uh, so now they are providing that service to city fire as well, uh, which has been a great thing. Uh, the guys are very receptive to it, they understand, um, what they see, what they do, and how it affects. So, uh, we're very happy to have that and, and, uh, working with, uh, Chief Britton. Uh, and I will say that our working relationship is very strong, uh, we support the departments as well, we're on the street together, uh, and we go through these things together as well. Public education, once again, is, is a lot of what we do, uh, so we spend a lot of time out in the public, uh, providing, uh, that public education element as well for not only kids, but for adults and our elderly population as well. So, um, that's all I have for that, any questions for me?
I know you deal with fire every day, I don't, so whenever, you know, it comes across my screen, it's notable. It seems like there's been an increase in the number of fires, is that true? Is that borne out in the data, or is it just better media coverage of these fires?
Well, the media tends to only cover things that, that look good on TV. When we talk about fires, a- and as a benefit of the city and, and you having a paid department in, in the city, is, our response is very quick. Uh, when we look at structure fires, and we have different terminology for them, room and content fires, rubbish fires, um, and so on and so forth. Has there been an increase? Our, our data doesn't show a, a major increase in the fire call. Uh, we were getting hit pretty quick with a, a lot of the high-profile type calls, which I think drew more attention to it. Eighty-two fires this year, um, now that includes our mutual aid responses, um. So I, I wouldn't say that number's any higher, we're always in that kind of same ballpark. This year, you know, having the free fatalities, um, drew more attention, I think, to that. Now, there are, and, and this is something that's important to understand, so, there's a thing out there called Pulse Point. All right, I don't know if anybody has it. It's an app you can get that, that shows the calls and as they're coming out of everybody responding across the, the county. And it's misleading, so it may say residential fire when in fact it's a smell of smoke, all right? So we get that a lot, well, you guys had four fires, now we had, you know, last night, you know, we had, you know, three people called that they thought they could smell something, that's just the way it's built into the CAD and it's sent out. So don't, if you're looking at that as a guidance as far as what we're responding on, that's not even anywhere near accurate is, is what it is. But no, I wouldn't say that that call volume, you know, looking back through the, the previous years, we're pretty much on, on, on work with that. And I think it's just the fact that a lot of our, you know, larger, uh, incidents kind of, uh, kind of piled on, you know, pretty quick within, from November until, um, you know, the end of the year, I, I believe the number was over fifteen fires that, that we had. So i- it was a busy, uh, busy time for us, but-
Chief, I'd like to, I'd like to add to that as well, um, because it does, I think it absolutely seemed, just from a perspective of a yearly basis, it di- it did seem that you heard about fires a lot this past year, right? But more so than you typically would, but I, I wanna point out, and I think, yeah, you already did, it, it's very, very important to take into the account the fatalities that we went through the, um, this past year, that doesn't happen like that often. I believe that had a huge impact on media coverage and our perception of what is really happening. And it's just i- important to recognize that, yes, you guys deal with this on a daily basis and, and, uh, we don't, but it's also important to recognize the factors that go into what gives us that perception. And I think that was extremely important.
Where does this year's fatalities line up with the past?
Well, I mean, we, we always shoot for a, a year of zero. You know, some years we, we have none, uh, some years we have, you know, maybe one or two. So this was, this would have been above average for us, uh, especially in that quick timeframe. Uh, unfortunately, if you look back over the, the last several years, uh, those numbers have somewhat remained steady, in that two-to-three range with some years having zero, so we've been, we've been fortunate. Uh, I will say that the ones we did have, um, um, and I really can't get into some of them, we're still under investigation, but a lot of these fires, um, the, the end of the story was written before we even got out the door. Uh, that's working with our, our detectives and our, our state police fire marshals and so on.
Just quickly, to, um, not all of, obviously, it wasn't all of them, but the, the fires that did cause fatality, there was a common theme in a couple of them.
Well, and, and I really don't wanna comment on that because I, until I have the official, uh, report back from the state police fire marshals, um, and, and with our, our, uh, Bureau of Criminal Investigation, um, when that does happen, uh, we plan on, on rolling that out and doing a press conference. You know, with the amount of fires we had that quick in that, that two-month timeframe, I get questioned all the time, and it's just premature to, to even, you know, speak of that, uh, until that's official and that, that ruling comes down.
Anything else? Thank you, Chief. And Mr. Rutledge, our Community and Economic Development Director.
Good evening and congratulations, everybody. For December, it was a little slow, I mean, I was off on vacation a little bit, so I attended the, uh, Planning Commission meeting, um, just recently, and, uh, during that meeting, we changed the, um, date to the first Tuesday now instead of the first Wednesday of the month. And then I attended and volunteered at the Christmas market with many other from the, the city. We met with the council-elect in December and went over departmental, uh, things that go on, like personnel and projects that we're working on. And then, uh, the market on Main Street, uh, which was funded through, uh, Community Economic Development for, um, equipment. We had, uh, had a signed agreement done on, in December, now we were waiting for the scope of work and when they plan on, you know, getting the building open before that stuff's done. Flood City Youth, we, uh, finished the, um, environmental review and we're starting to work on the agreement. We're waiting for scope of work and the item, the items that are left over for that. And then, uh, Victim Services and Women's Health Center, the two home ERP-funded projects. Victim Services is in the last phases, they are going to start working on their second-floor construction. And then the Women's Health Center, the proposed resolution, and I will say that for each one of them, there were public notices that went out, uh, several of them that were posted, and each one of them, there was no public comments received for any of them. Owner-occupied rehabilitation, we, uh, are continuing to address, um, many, uh, rehabilitation liens that are up. Uh, there's one property that was fully completed last month, another property which is currently in the construction phase of the project. We have one project, uh, that completed the bidding process and we are waiting to award the contract. Three properties in the initial stages of inspections, demo, we are starting to go through and comb through lists and lists of properties to start looking at demolition, uh, lists. First-time home buyers, we have one property that is out for bid for the rehabilitation portion of the, um, program. We have an applicant, uh, that we are waiting on signatures and two applicants that are waiting on letters from the bank. The facade program, we have one business that we officially awarded, um, two applicants that are currently preparing quotes. Sewer lateral, we have five awaiting their bids. Two properties awaiting the contracts to be signed, and then the city website. The city website is completed up to training, uh, we have two training dates scheduled with revised, it is one-twenty-eight and two-four of this year, and then after that, we can start working, looking at the migration and everything to get the site up and going. And then for the loans, uh, we have twenty-four active loans listed in our, um, system, and then twenty of those loans are paid up in current. We have two older loans from the past, some of them date back nineties, they're still running in the collections. Uh, there's payments that come periodically on those, and then we have two that are now outstanding and past due that we're still working ongoing efforts to collect those ones. And any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Rutledge? Thank you, Mr.-
All right, thanks.
At this time, we will have- At this time, we will have public comment on any non-agenda items, we have a limit of three minutes. Mr. Di Bartolo.
Good evening, for the final time tonight. I'm still curious why I'm sequestered over there without a formal written policy. I've asked every month, I want that for the record. Secondly, thank you for listening on some of the transparency issues, I was paying attention, I appreciate that. I hope everything is online for me not to have to waste your time with right to knows. But I have three things about transparency that I don't understand. One, rumors are circulating around the community that you fired the finance director. I don't see her here, and I've seen on all your Facebook pages, you're advertising for a finance director. What happened? What's the revolving door now? Why was she fired if that's true? Secondly, only two of you were on my Facebook. Maybe I'll send the other four of you a friend request and shock the hell out of you, you never know. I spoke with one of you about the parking lot tax, I didn't know we had a parking lot tax. Twenty-five thousand dollar line item in their budget for it. You're resurrecting this from nineteen eighty-six? No one in the community knew we had this tax. What's going on? And if you're taxing us again, why are you resurrecting it? I've never heard, and if you've had it for years and years, I never heard of it before. Most people, when I put it on Facebook, were in shock. For my last two minutes, the big thing I want to talk about is the one thing that should be the biggest media story of this night. The fact that you failed to pass a resolution to fix the public safety building. I'm in shock sitting here. Three of you voted to waste eight million dollars on Central Park. Two million you lost in design plans. Now you have an item on the agenda to make repairs to a building that one month ago, one month, I saw on the news because there's kiddie pools to catch the rainwater, because there's so much damage. I believe Taylor was the only one to put the motion in, the rest of you couldn't even do a second to vote on repairs. Oh, it was you, it was you Chuck? My mistake, I'm sorry. You couldn't vote to put repairs in your building? You have, I believe, two and a half million dollars for repairs. This is historic building, this should be the biggest story we see on the media, that you failed to repair a historical building, and not one of you commented on why. Why won't you repair the building? Why won't you address what the plans are? Are you selling it? Are you knocking it down? Are you, have you abandoned repairing it? How can you all sit there patting each other on the back when this building is literally falling apart? Our heritage is going with it. You have the money to start repairs, you acknowledge on the news that there's a major leak coming in from our roof, there could be asbestos, there could be mold, whatever the situation is. We've been talking about this building for fifteen years of repairs, and you failed us. So as you're all congratulating from everybody, oh, great job, great job, look at our building, look at our history. How are you going to address this building? You have two and a half million dollars, Representative Burns got you a grant, I believe, maybe that's true, yes? How are you going to address this building? And why did you have an item on the agenda to do repairs if you didn't plan on passing it? Someone had to put that on the agenda, whether it was Mr. Arnony or if it was Mr. Maranushka. I, I, I'm in shock, that's my three minutes, thank you.
Ms. Heidi, did you want to have an opportunity?
Mayor, before we go there.
I'm sorry.
I think, I think it is a good idea to address the item that was on the agenda, and to perhaps lay out why it didn't get a second and it, and it, it didn't pass.
Okay, so it would be your opinion?
Yeah, yeah, my opinion, my opinion. And that would be that I think this contract should be put out for bid, and that I think that we should do everything that we can to save as much in the planning process that we can, so that we don't have a repeat of the Central Park project. I think we should, you know, we got some pressure from different people that the timeline means we have to just force this through, and we have to accept the contract as it is. And I'm not going to be pressured into making a bad financial, what I believe to be a bad financial decision, just because of a timeline crunch. I think we have thirty days that we should advertise for other proposals, and if we end up with the same engineering group, then fine, if it's the same price, then fine. But at least then, we will have done our due diligence to try and save the taxpayers any money, and hopefully we do. And so I, I would not agree with the characterization that this is a failure. I think we all recognize that this is the building that we're going to have to renovate. We are not building a new building, that is done and over with. We want to see the, as much money go into this building as possible to complete the renovations, but we're going to do it in a fiscally responsible way. That's my opinion.
Very good, thank you.
I second, I second Mr. Spinelli, that's, he couldn't have said it any better.
The resolution is for, it's a preliminary design, it's not actually to fix the building. It's a preliminary design, and it is the prerogative of the administration, the city administration, that they can, correct me if I'm wrong, that they can choose, since this is professional services, they can just pick someone. But for me personally, I would like to see it go out for RFP, that perhaps there are other companies who might want to put in a, put in a B F for a design. And I believe that'll give us a way to have some type of comparative analysis and just, instead of just taking the first thing in front of us, and as he said, if it comes back the same, then it is, but at least it gives us a framework, and then I think it helps this council moving forward so that we can know what prices are. If you don't know, you don't know, if you don't have anything to compare it to, you don't have anything to compare it to. So that was my thought process.
I'd like to add to that, too, and it just understood, just so everyone's clear. I completely understand exactly where you, Nick, are coming from. I'm just going to try and caution something as well. This building is, as we all know, is in desperate, desperate need. If we want to put this out for RFP and to get more bids on this, we better do it, and we better do it really fast, meaning tomorrow. I mean, let's start quick, okay? So the, the thing is, obviously with, with having to do these, you know, bids, they have to be properly advertised and so on and so forth. There is a good amount of money coming from a different fund that we must spend by September thirtieth of this year. And some believe that that may be extended. I don't see that happening for a second, because it already was extended. So I just would like to caution and just say that we don't want to lose that money, and we have to go through the right processes to make sure that it is going to be used at some point. I hear where you're coming from, but let's move fast, because we didn't, we, we didn't have time in December, let's put it that way.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I would agree with you, Taylor. But I don't think it's not possible, right? We had some information that we're going to be able to meet this timeline. I agree, it's going to be tight, but I, I don't think that it's not able to be met. And so I think that because it's available to us, we should
Take advantage.
Take advantage of it.
Any other council person? Okay, well then, back to our non-agenda items, three minutes. And Ms. Heidi, you were up, did you want to speak?
I would just like to say thank you, everyone, and I'm going to speak for myself personally and the other rescuers. We are going to do our very best and continue to help these animals in our city. So I just want to say thank you.
And I have her name, the spelling of her name and address, okay, alright. Yeah, that's okay. Ms. Laura, did you, no, okay. Dustin? And please, do your.
Before you start, the time, this is city-related, this is a, well, this one is. One moment, the. Dustin Green, D U S T I N G R E E N E, three-one-two Chestnut Street, City of Johnstown.
And your time starts now.
Well, this is a Shore MX four-one-two C twelve microphone, please get a new one, thanks. It's got to be replaced. There's priorities in life. When I left my apartment this evening, above my business, I walked out to find none other than Mark Pascarella outside my building. And he was there for a long time, and I remarked last month that he wasn't here. And there's priorities in life, tonight, at my favorite restaurant, Laurel and Graus, they're having bolognese. And I chose to come here instead of going there, because this is more important. And I watched and waited to see where he'd go. I thought maybe he was going over to Bottle Works for a meeting, but no, he walked down to Laurel and Graus for dinner, and I checked my cameras, he's still there. And I want to remark again, these business leaders in this community need to show up and come to these things, priorities. I didn't get my beef bolognese tonight, and I'm angry, but I'll get it another night. Dumpsters, yes, they worked well, but they need to check IDs at the place. Reporting, I wanted to remark what happened tonight. Reverend King, thank you for making people report here at the podium. If that was your decision, or whoever did that tonight was great. I once did A V for two events in different counties. One event here in Johnstown took off the public speaking moment for five minutes of the time, where a doctor spoke to the audience and gave a remark about breast cancer. In the other one, he spoke, and people were educated and got to ask questions for those five minutes. Tonight, we got to see you ask questions to the police chief, fire chief, et cetera. When those reports aren't read here at, at public comment, or at this podium, we as the public aren't informed what's going on in our public sector, and you also don't get to ask, answer those questions. Those reportings need to be done here at this meeting, not by a doc, a paper sent to you in advance. Lastly, I attended the Renee Good Ice Out Event, and I held up these signs. I'm not mad at you. Justice for good. And my famous one forty-three. Thirty seconds left, I want to remind this community that we're in a change of America, and that I don't want to see this happening in Johnstown. If you don't know this quote, and if you're, you don't Google it, look up what happened in Minnesota. I'm scared for our community, and I hope we don't see anything like this in our community, and I hope our public leaders will stand up for what's right. One forty-three is always, which means I love you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dustin. Dr. Chris, did you have any?
No, thank you guys so much.
And Ms. Dorothy, Ms. Dorothy now, please come. You have three minutes, please give us, give us your name and your address and.
Dorothy Clark, D O R O T H Y, C L A R K, ten fifty-eight Boyd Avenue. I would like to express my sincere appreciation to council for allowing me to speak tonight. In addition, I would like to extend a friendly, extend a friendly welcome and hello to those newly appointed, and to you, Mayor King, for your dedication to this community. I live in the Eighth Ward, and I have for seven years, and I work at Randy's BiLo, where I have been the department head of the deli for nine years. I attend Franklin Street Church, where I am a Christian, where I host a Christian-based support group called Celebrate Recovery. The issue at hand is still garbage. It is an epidemic that is plaguing the streets of this city. I spoke about this in November's meeting, we spoke of signage, no littering, and no dumping. I walk my dog and pick up trash and fill bag after bag. The Eighth Ward has placed four garbage cans in the area to try to help. We have been entrusted by God to subdue this earth, not to pollute it. We are called to be stewards of this planet. I have repeatedly cleaned Osborne Street to Horner Street to Valley Pike. Numerous lawn and leaf bags have been filled. On January eighth, I picked up three more bags of garbage. I would like to thank the Public Works Department for picking them up. I truly believe you cannot be part, complain about a problem if you're not willing to be part of the solution. So what is the solution? I think we, if we could, is there a way that we could organize a cleanup day for the entire city, walking the streets with garbage bags? Place more trash receptacles in strategic hotspots such as the bus terminals? Talk to community groups and appoint community neighborhood representatives? Ask Greater Johnstown or Bishop McCourt for volunteers from their athletic groups? Educating the youth on what garbage does to our city? I believe in Johnstown, I believe we are about to see great things occur in the near future. I believe Johnstown is to be treasured, not trashed. Johnson is not, Johnstown is not junk, and it should not look like it. I am willing to volunteer my time, talent, and resources to spearhead this project. I do my best to keep up with it, but there's still so much more territory that needs to be cleaned. I'm a see a need, meet a need kind of person. Just tell me what to do, what's the solution, and I'll do it. I appreciate your concern in this matter, someone has to care about this city, and I do, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dorothy. Anything else for the good or the cost, council, city manager, madam? Are we all good? I'd like to thank each and every last one of you for attending the meeting this evening. Our next scheduled meeting is February the eleventh. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, we do have a special meeting on January twenty-eighth, six o'clock? Is it six, okay, January twenty, pardon me? Six o'clock, right? We have a special, we have a special meeting on January, on January twenty-eighth, and then we will have our regular scheduled, regularly scheduled meeting on February the eleventh at six o'clock. We'd like to. Pardon me? Oh, that's, that's, but that's private? No, it's, it's an open, public. That's our interviews, I am so sorry, you're absolutely correct. We have a special meeting tomorrow at five o'clock to interview for the position, to fill the seat on council, starts at five o'clock tomorrow. Yes, I, I do apologize, I forgot all about that. So there's a meeting tomorrow, five o'clock, to interview the candidates to fill the position on council. Then January twenty-eighth is a special meeting, and then there is a, our regular scheduled meeting on February the eleventh at six P M. Okay, is that all? Okay, I thank you all once again for coming, be safe, meeting is adjourned. You know what they're maybe so, is to make sure nobody asks a question that they shouldn't, yeah? That's okay, that's okay. You never consider getting the little things in your ear? Okay, here.